[laughing]
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Uh, Richard, do we have any questions?
Yes.
You manage all the... We're going to be over in a heartbeat. By the way, there you go.
You've got an extra agenda.
Uh, yeah.
Because they're important.
Yeah.
So I think we'll get a little bit started with public comments and then... I think we got you rolling on here. Are you ready? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 9:01. We'll begin with public comment. There'll also be another public comment at 9:30. This public comment's normally for items we're going to be taking up a closed session. If there are any one that would like to go up at this time. I do have a card from Vern... Parker?
My last name is Korea, Vern Korea.
Okay, hi.
How are you guys doing this morning?
Good, how are you?
Oh, not bad, not bad at all. You guys know where I'm from? Been here about four years now. About a place out in Lake Levee Road out there. Little 20-acre parcel out there. I own two residencies. I'm from Hawaii. My wife owns a residency over here. Just lately, we've been running into a little bit of a problem. Okay, I'm Mauteo, Kaimi, Kupomo, it's the richest of the land. Basically, we bought some land. I'm making the land look a little bit more pretty over there, okay? The problem is, it started January 2nd. I've been trying to notify your sheriff since January 2nd for a return call or a meeting about some problems I'm having with deputies coming on my property. I've called noon rest times about four times. We've seen this happening, gunfire in the back of my property, certain other things, large rent in my house from me, left without paying rent, in shambles, whatever the case may be. They don't come for a long while, okay, that's one of the problems. Second problem was January 2nd, over a dog, I got put in handcuffs in front of my four-and-a-half-year-old son. Right? Tried to call my wife who works for Sierra Cascade to come pick up my son. He refused to let me have my wife come pick up my son. On my own property, I was put in handcuffs. That's one problem. Tried to talk to the sheriff and call him, no return call, no anything. Okay, I know I got a short amount of time right now to explain all this to you nice people. I've got a 35-year-old, 33-year-old, 30-year-old, I've got a four-and-a-half-year-old. I've been in two wars. And this affects the morning of me. When I send a child to school in District 3, Schaefer School. I can't find my son on a bus over an hour and 15 minutes while trying to talk to the principal superintendent, commandant of that little school. I will set police officers after me on my property. All because I was trying to find my son for over an hour and 15 minutes. By the way, my son's four and three-quarters years old in preschool. Second incident, after 5th September, coming back from Labor Day, that incident happened. Second incident happened. A lady was ripping on her child when I went to go pick up my child, backhanding her kid. I tried to report that to the school. I had two deputies sent to my property telling me I was no longer allowed on the school. So we took our child out of the school. He's not in Jamesville School. By the way, it went quite well. A lot of homework over there. I love it. I don't want to be a cowboy like me. I want to be something else besides that. I don't know what the problem is over here in this county. I don't even care. I didn't even been on TV for nine years after I came out of the United States military because I really just don't care. But what I care about is my family. And what I care about is my property. And to have people rip it out of my road, a sergeant, a deputy, rip it because I asked him to leave, he got offended. Not looking for my livestock, not looking for my animals, not, no care of nothing. Now you're invading my civil rights as far as I'm concerned. I'm bringing this up to you guys because I understand you guys are fair governed, but here, I understand that you guys bring the hammer down when the hammer needs to be brought down. Now, chain of command wise, I tried the best I could to bring up a chain of command to the sheriff who's in charge of those deputies out there. No response, no nothing. This nice lady tried to call me a few weeks back, but I was, just like you mentioned, I was in Hawaii helping my daughter get out of a lab roll out of Punta Cai, okay? So I had to kind of go back and forth. This is kind of important to me, you know? I would appreciate if something could be looked into. I was not even given the opportunity or the right to go into in front of the board of trustees. She sent deputies with letters denying me the right to go to a meeting. So I could come in front of the board of trustees with the letters of the two incidences amongst the superintendent, principal, whatever she is, commandant over there, okay? That lady, after talking to seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 20 people around my neighborhood over there, they all transferred all the Schaefer School to Jamesville School. They've all had encounters with this lady. I hunt only boar. I don't even own a gun over here. I've had deputies handcuffed to walk into my residence looking for things that is not there. I'm not a druggie. I can take a drug test 24/7 for anybody that I want. I'm very disturbed about what's happening here. I've called the FBI office out of Sacramento, California, and I'm going to do something about this. Almost one year to this day, I have not had that sheriff open up his door to me so I can sit down and explain to him that we have a serious problem here. We do have a serious problem. There's more than just me. I'm just not completely tied to this community here. I might not want to be. I just want to live. We bought a place. My wife's from really into California. I didn't like BP, Papa, FUs going up and down the road. I told her, "Let's go find a nice place that looks like Big Island, Hawaii." This looks exactly like the thing I know of Hawaii. Looks where I'm from, Kamala, Hawaii. I'm fifth generation from Hawaii. I'm not a track man, I'm not anything. I just, my wife runs rodeo, WPRA. She made a run for the national finals, she didn't make it. All because of incidences like this that we can't even get on the road to go enjoy. January 2nd, we came back from the four rodeo swing. It was 3 o'clock in the morning, we returned back to our quarters. I had a deputy covering an animal control lady who never even stepped out of her vehicle to go investigate where my dogs were. You guys realize what ohana means? Ohana means family. Well, I got 160-pound American Bulldog that is ohana. I ran a movie with a tractor five years ago, and he's still with us. One dog got away from my property. They were very right. I put my dog in the kennel, animal control came, I said, "You are okay to take that dog. We're wrong, we're wrong." The dog got out of our property, went into somebody else's property. They said, "No, we're taking two dogs." I said, "Well, no, you can't do that. That dog wasn't over that property. That dog moves like a snail. That dog doesn't even want fences. That dog doesn't do anything. He's old." The deputy put me in cuffs. I beat him. We performed surgeries on my right hand side. I'm automatically gone. I don't use no microphone over here. Okay. I told them that. He refused for me to use the phone to call my wife, pick up my child. And he would arrest me, my child would be in child protective services. Well, my wife not even knowing where I was. I'm retired military. I don't bother nobody. I mean, I have a new family. And all I explained that to them. I said, "The dog goes nowhere. The dog didn't need to go." The lady, animal control ladies, I'll put you, she never even stepped out of the truck to look for a hole in the fence for anything. Yeah, next one, he was to DA's office. The lady knows him well. I called him for a problem, sheriff's department, it'd take two hours to get out there. She called him for a problem, he was there 10, 10 minutes.
I just... Where are you going to be? Are you available at 11:30? We have a short agenda. I'd like to meet with you after the meeting with Richard.
Thank you, sir. I am available, yeah, Richard. I have my son with me, that's my problem, you know, right?
Yeah, we'll get this, we'll get the results.
I really thank you for your guys' time. Mahalo mula. Oh, thank you.
So if you want to come back, uh...
Yeah, I can do that. I have to get my wife to work. We only own one truck. We don't own four vehicles. Sorry about that.
Can we accommodate that?
Yeah.
So you get some morning food?
Yeah. I'll try to come back to Sheriff Monday. Yeah, that would be nice. I appreciate it. Thank you very, very much, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to go on their public comment?
Oh, is this the time for each?
We actually, we have a public comment at 9:30 as well. This is normally for items we're going to take up a closed session and then...
Oh, this is not, yeah. I don't know if this would be in closed session or not.
If you're here for a specific agenda item, there's also, before we take up each item, there's a public comment.
So isn't my time at 9:30 then, is what you're saying?
Why are you here for a certain agenda item?
I don't know if it's on the agenda or not.
It is on the agenda. It's a field process.
Yes.
So that's not at this...
9:30.
Yes, sometime after 9:30.
Right. If there's no other public comment, we'll go on to our closed session. If you could announce the items to be discussed.
I will. Mr. Chairman, the board will be convening in closed session for a conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. One case, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9, I'm sorry, two cases. Conference with labor negotiator, Richard Egan, Ward Pilkington, as the Lassen County In-Home Supportive Services Public Agency for discussion on labor negotiations. That will occur at 1:30. And also, we will have a conference with labor negotiator Rick Hay, which may include the following bargaining units: Lassen County Peace Officers Association, United Public Employees of California, Lassen County Road Workers Association, Management Professional Association, Lassen County Peace Officers Association Supervisors Unit, Lassen County Peace Officers Association Management Unit, Lassen County Deputy Sheriff's Association, and Lassen County Management Association.
All right, so with that, we'll go into closed session. We'll feel all the joy and supervisor colleagues in their place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read another prayer supplied to us. Another beautiful prayer by Violet. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, guide us today through our meeting that we make profound judgment in all issues before us. Grant us the foresight to know the outcome so as to no one will suffer from our decision. Amen. And also Violet asks, read her Thanksgiving week's poem, "Rainbows are forever." Into our lives come many things, joy, success, and grief. And sometimes just a word or two comfort or brave relief. The things that we have not planned on that will happen unaware will sometimes leave us feeling like no one seems to care. But when your day is cloudy and you would like to cry, remember, remember "rainbows are forever" to brighten up your sky. And thank you Violet for this. And happy Thanksgivings, well, love always Violet. And I'd like to thank Violet for the, okay, the flower she presented to the board, so thank you. Okay, we will begin, item B1, announcement of items to discuss.
Mr. Chairman, the board met in closed session for a conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. Two cases, there was no reportable action. The board deferred the remainder of closed session until 1:30 for the remaining two items.
We'll move on to B2, agenda approval additions and north additions. You moved to second, is there any comment on it? Okay. All who's in favor say aye. Chair votes aye. Okay, we'll move on to a public comment. Again, if you're here for a particular agenda item, you'll have an opportunity to comment at that time if you want to. If you're here to make any other public comment or general public comment, this would be the time to do so. Okay, scene nine, we'll move on to our unadvised board reports. Supervisor Chapman?
Do you think, Mr. Lord, Mr. Chairman, this fellow gave a report on the conflicts last week in Anaheim, and I printed it on behalf of the board for CSAP, Health and Safety Association of County, appeared on Tuesday and came back Friday. And it was a pretty, pretty jam-packed, Board of Directors meeting, it was held on Thursday afternoon, basically that we see all the reports from the various committees, had a couple presentations were made and pretty much gratified all of the business. The main thing was the administration of justice. The board adopted the formula that was created by the CAO's committee as related to just first thing, maybe 109 million, a million dollars that we never had planned into this year's budget. So it was kind of a high stakes game. Rural counties, we not treated all that well in the process. Part of the reason we don't have a place at the table is because of the state counties. Again, the transition of Justice Committee earlier in the week, because it was in conflict, we had a couple policy committees going on at the same time, and I attend with the Government Finance and Operations Committee. And Richard might be able to, but I think we did go over it, it was asking for a bit, so maybe you would be able to give me enough to update after what that EB9 policy was discussed there. It was accepted by the full board of directors the next day. Probably the most interesting of all the sections that we had, was the Rural Caucus meeting that was held Wednesday afternoon. That's kind of when we select our representatives to serve on the executive committee and to basically get voice. Richard Forster, who's the supervisor from Annenberg County, is now the first vice president of the association next year. And he's been one of those working with all of us. He kind of came out R.C., R.C. before he kind of took on the leadership of CSAP. We had a fellow supervisor from Tuolumne County who basically dominated mostly the agenda. And I found his stuff just totally fascinating. Some of it actually pertains to issues that we have here. I know that you had a coordinating committee last night, Bob, and you were able to attend.
I was able to attend.
Okay, because I think these are issues that I'll make, I'm going to make an effort to have Regina copy these handouts here that I was able to snag from his presentation. First of all, he talked about the snowlands, winter, wildlands, and the issue of dealing with snowmobiles and all the snowmobile trails. And there's apparently about 1,000 miles of trails that are affected by Forest Service policy. We actually had a fellow supervisor here a few weeks ago talking about the effect of these policy changes the Forest Service is making as it relates to the Lassen. As it turns out, the Lassen National Forest has about over 400 of 900 and some miles, so we're about 45% of the total. But I think it's important that we kind of watch this there and know what the supervisor's horse supervisor indicated to us, that we're going to be fine in trying to keep our trails potent. Apparently, the Lassen National Forest and several of the other forests down in Stanislaw, the Tahoe, and El Grande are actually moving to shut down the ability for snowmobile access on trails that have been historically used for years. So it's going to be kind of a big fight. If they succeed down there, that, you know, that could easily creep up here. And I think, Bob, it's one of you would be greatly interested, because I know western and, you know, the Lake Elmore area is kind of a portal to a lot of the snowmobile trail that we have here on the western side of the country. So that was discussed. He also talked about, he brought up another action dealing with the state. This guy, he does all these meetings. Apparently, meetings happen every day, all week long, every week for like the last three months. And some of these meetings, I wasn't even aware they existed. He brought back the materials. We attended the statewide grazing regulatory action project that was being put forth by the state water boards. And actually, it's the regional water board in the Haunted Region, actually, I was sitting on that back in 2004 through about 2007. We were having discussions about how they were going to approach. That was part of the reason why I left, because they were going off in that direction that I just felt to be offensive. But they've actually, in the last apparently five, six years, they've moved it to a point and they're now giving all the regional boards pretty much following the need of the Haunted Board. This is being coordinated by the State Water Resources Control Board, their effects grazing on public lands and just turning the cattle loose and have them out there on the range. And there's apparently a regulatory action that's not going to be coming down. So I've got that information. I think we need to be tuned in to that because that's something that I think as a board we need to be forthcoming. And the Haunted Region is about three-quarters of our county, so it's big. And the other thing I found that was interesting was the fish planting reduction. I hadn't heard this, but apparently the part of the fishing game are, is in the process of payback on all their fish plants throughout the state. Historically, you're planting everywhere in all the various lakes and streams and so forth are being reused drastically. The one fish that is not being cut back is going to be the Eagle Lake trout. There's about four species that are going to be kept at pretty much the same level, but it's going to have an effect on the fisheries throughout the state. But it may be in this case a boon for us because it's our fish. And we have to be concerned about whether we're going to take our fish out of here and planting them in other parts of the state. The Eagle Lake trout is one of the few that have been examined from it. The guy also, the broom fire down there was in this guy's backyard, so he talked big time about the effects of the broom fire and certainly. But that was very interesting and it was a good conference, had a chance to engage in network of all the other supervisors around the state. And all I can say is that after you attend those kind of meetings, you're really back at home. Even though we got problems that we have to deal with, then our problems are nothing like some of the problems that some of the counties have. And so we can be very thankful that there's a mountain ranch here and we're a decided mountain, at least for the rest of California. I think one of the big benefits, and I have a bunch of stuff in a venue, I feel like that they have a vendor, kind of an expo set up where they have all kinds of, Richard was able to go through it too, but they have like a lot of people who do businesses consulting with other kinds of services provided the counties across the state. The speed radar sites that we have scattered around by the school districts and stuff was something that I picked up at one of these conferences years ago and brought that idea back and it was something, it's those kind of companies. But one of the people I have to vent, and there's just a lot of, just a multitude of, sorry, there's one guy even showed me where we did collect 9.4 million dollars in court fines. I assume Richard did collect 9.4 million dollars in court fines. He said, "Actually, when we looked at the numbers, our county was much better than most counties, because we were over 50% of the collection." Apparently, it's a huge problem statewide that the courts, the counties get stuff, having to administer the collections. And a lot of these are, you know, you can't get the money out of them, I guess. And so this is a company that specializes in trying to improve those rates. So I told him we needed to talk to Richard and if he could get more blood out of the turnip that, you know, show Richard how to do it, I'm pretty sure we'd be happy to try to come to you. But, you know, economic development is, you know, the big topic. In fact, several of the new supervisors who were elected that were present at the things where we all talked about, how they run on platforms, technological development and so forth, and that seems to be a fairly popular topic throughout the rural part of the state. The Institute for Local Government has several publications. They actually put on some force work. So if anybody's really interested in understanding, we have it developed. That is not just for supervisors, it can be for county staff, it could be probably for anybody from the general public. But you might want to check out the Institute for Local Government, it has a sort, but they have some really good materials and they put on a couple of presentations. The last one I want to report on is Government Finance and Operations Committee. And we had a gentleman there, in fact, Richard was there for that part of the meeting, the head from the Legislature Analyst Office. He basically came and gave us the bad news that they're expecting a bill over $2 billion in excess of what was projected in the state budget. They put in the budget paying back this prior to 2004. This was in 2004 is when the state was really in dire straits. They basically told us that the monies that we were entitled to receive as counties to fund mandated programs would be shortchanged because they had to kind of order what they could and take care of the schools and take care of other state operations. So in essence, they took over a billion dollars of county funds and some state funds and redirected it to fund. And the pretext was that at some point in time, when things get back on track and we have some excesses and some surpluses that we can work with, that we will pay back that billion dollars. It's kind of like the cartoon character, you know, give me a hamburger today and I'll pay you next Tuesday, kind of the mode. Well, they took the money, you know, they had their hamburger, and now it's next Tuesday and they have the money in the pot. And with this guy, his name is Brian Euler, he's a senior fiscal and policy analyst from the LNO's office. But he basically wanted to inform us that even though now there's going to be this over $2 billion now, they have paid back small amounts of it. We had $100 million in the budget for this year, which we're going to be seeing some of that paid. And they're deferring the remaining 800 million to, you know, future years. So they're dragging this out. It's 10 years out and they're going to drag it on. Well, supposedly, there's a trigger in there that out of this 2-plus billion dollars that we're going to be entitled to receiving, about 170 million more possibly may be put in to offset some of this. But that remains, leaves about over half a billion dollars that they still owe the counties. Because of all the other cornuism politics that are there, the priority, even though we're going to be struggling with BB 109 and trying to meet the demands that that's going to do in terms of changing the characters of our, characteristic of our communities across the state, we're going to feel it here in Lassen County, no question about it. So they're going to take all this new money, or this extra money that comes in, instead of paying off excess debts from the past, including the roughly half a billion dollars that they're still going to owe us, and they're taking that $2 billion and they're going to give it to the schools to expand their particular programs. So you made a mistake, and I think Jeff did too, of getting elected at this board, because if you'd stayed on the college board, you'd get the money. Come to this board, they take the money away from you. But that was, I think was, I had a chance to take the mic and give my historical critique. And the guy couldn't argue with the fact that, you know, that's exactly what they promised. And their job is, they're nonpartisan, they're not, you know, supporting the legislature and the governor, and their job is to present the facts to them so that they can make the right choices. To his credit, he said they made that pitch to them, but the politics, both with Governor Brown as well as with the legislature, is that the counties be damned. You know, they want to be buddy-buddies with us when they want to seduce us. But when the time comes to pay the bill, when the time comes to pay the hamburger guy his money on Tuesday, the priority is the debt. And so I think that's just indicative of what's been going on for a number of years. But it was, it was good to have a chance to let them know that there are those of us who've been around long enough and watched that game be played, and it's not acceptable and we need to make a press to do that. So I think it's something, I'll work with Richard, so I think it'd be worthwhile to write a resolution, send it off to our representatives and say that, you know, this is, we see this has been told this is what's going to happen, how it's going to happen, but it's not right and it's not fair and it's not what I think serves the public interest. And also, that particular, and this is something that I know in the auditor's office, and Richard will be dealing with, the new Gatsby 68. Pension and accounting standards were presented and discussed. We had two representatives there, one of them from Calpers, the Chief Financial Officer, and she's enough to kind of have a dear in fact, you know, stand up and keep that down and talk about. The good news is, I think, because we're one of the only local jurisdictions, the only county that has their OPEB, Post Benefit, Compartment Benefit... county that has their OPEB, post benefit, employment benefit funded, fully funded, you know, they kind of did single us out and said, you know, there are some jurisdictions that have done that. But that works to our favor. But I think the next wave of requirements is going to even be more on us on local government. And some of this could be required as a result of GASB 68. So, we got our first infection with that. That was in essence, most of the meeting. By the time I got home, I was glad to be back and away from the urban problems that exist in the state. So, be glad we're in there. Thanks. I think of that every time I go visit my mom and says, there I grew up, I can't believe that, oh, how it's changed. So, I tell you, there was one other thing I just wanted to share. So, one of the things that we had, ran into supervisors from Monterey, from San Luis Obispo, from Santa Clara County, the one guy from Santa Clara County, actually during our cable at the board of directors meeting. And we had a very interesting conference, a fellow from Siskiyou County, from Trinity County, myself, one other county, who was sitting at that particular cable. And the first question they had out of their mouth was, how many staff do you have as board members? And we all looked at him and said, we don't have staff. We have to do pretty much all the things I know. But this guy had like eight staff. A lot of them have like five or, you know, they have several staff. We have Regina, she takes care of all the board, and she takes care of Richard, and she basically runs the whole county. And that's how things work. But it showed you the dynamics in terms of difference in the fact that they measure what they do based on how much staff we have. We don't have any staff, so we get to do it all ourselves. Makes the job more.
Thanks, Jim. Supervisor Hammond?
On December 5th, I have a meeting with Governor Maffin, Mark Amade, Dean Heller's representatives about the National Rural Health Association Clinic. And also, some of the colleges, local colleges are going to be involved in this meeting. We are going to try to get the colleges involved, because there's such a critical shortage of physicians. And so, I think we're going to try to work with you to where we can get some of the people coming from the colleges, the local colleges, to help us out with that staffing process. And it looks pretty promising. All of the initial contacts have been very positive. So, maybe we can give our local medical community a hand up, if that's on December 5th. Also, on the future dates, Richard, I didn't see where HPod have plans is going to come and make a presentation about the water state, all the new state water regulations and stuff. If anybody is well versed in that, I'm going to ask him to come and make a presentation. It'd be happy.
I'll get that script.
Yeah.
January, do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Cal?
Charlie?
Is he reporting to Tan or anything?
No.
Okay. I'll briefly comment coordination council meeting last night. Although we didn't have a quorum, we still had some good dialogue. And Richard, thanks for coming. Things are important, you know. Nobody likes another meeting, but it is important to have you there. In any case, Ken from the BLM gave a very good update. There's quite a lot of stuff going on. Actually, his information was so, you know, comprehensive, I thought it would be a good idea if we actually put this on the agenda. And I think we're doing that for the 16th, and Ken is going to come in and talk about it. But in the meantime, I'd like to put this there on the public, so maybe if anybody wants to look through it. It lists a variety of 20 or 30 things they have on the go, from, from updates in the Russia fire, the sage droughts, all the way down to some recreational projects they have gone at Fort Sage and the events there. And also, there was some discussion, and I have the talking points from the meeting on November 12th between the county and the Forest Service on all of our road systems and what's defined as highways, not highways, for any of you interested in the OHV aspect. So, I'm going to, if we can place these out on the table, those are the information, maybe if anyone's simple. And then, again, that's stuff in the BLM will be part of our 16th meeting. I think, I'd like to move over to H1. We'll take that up quick. I know there's, I see the assessors in here, and I see some other people. So, we'll go ahead and take that item up. H, no, is it H2 or H?
H2.
H2.
Two and three.
Two.
Two.
H2. Let's take of H2. Supervisor Hammond?
Yes, I answer this beyond the agenda, because a lot of my constituents are a little bit puzzled and upset about the appeals process. But I've been assured that we're improving on that. I myself have never filed an appeal, so I don't know the process. But I see Dan is here, and I'd really like Dan to bring you the documents, and we can go over how that process works, you know, to improve upon what's happened in the past.
Yeah, we've had about four appeals hearings in the last two years. We're completely caught up. By the end of January, we're going to have everything cleared off the, off the docket, including stuff that's been filed in 2014. So, we, between county counsel and the clerk and the assessor's office, we've, we've caught up with, you know, anything that was backlogged, we've either heard, or it's been extended by the, by the client, by the person that appeals. I think we're well on our way to getting it completely straightened out.
Typically, Dan, how long is the process going to take after we get everything done?
Typically, or where we are now, because typically, sometimes it would take up to two years. Now, we're at a point where the last appeal we saw last month, we saw one that had, that had been applied for maybe three months earlier. So, anywhere from, I mean, some of the ones that are coming in, the 29th is the deadline to apply, and we'll have those looked at by, in January of this coming year. So, two months is where we are right now, from application to appeal hearing, two months.
Okay. I'd really like to see the application documents and all that stuff to, you know, so if my constituents call me.
To see, to see when it came in versus when it's scheduled?
Yeah, I'd like to see that. And I need to know the process itself.
No problem.
Dan has some questions.
Okay.
Can you speak to names to everybody?
Dan Schley or county assessor?
Thank you. Real quick, the recorder's not on. They are carrying it in the offices. That's all. Upstairs, they didn't hear it, and Julie just said they aren't carrying over there either. That's all.
Ask her where she can use the lights.
It's on the way. The recorder down here is on.
You mind coming up, so we don't have to?
Do you mind coming up on the audio?
Maybe they're not here.
Thanks.
Sure.
How are you doing?
I'm doing fine.
So, when, well firstly, how do you go about, because I think before we get to the appeal, how do you go about the assessing something, the assessed value? Like, because I think that's a lot of the reasons.
Like assessment 101 or?
Yeah, I mean, well, like for instance.
Part 13.
The, there are some things on the internet, you familiar with the, the American Institute of Real Estate.
Yes.
So, the way they, they define it, the most probable price that the specified party, or the specified property interest should sell for in a competitive market after a reasonable exposure time.
Right.
As of a specified date in cash or in terms of equivalent to cash, under all condition requisite to a fair sale. Would the buyer and seller each acting prudently, knowledgeably, for self-interest, and assuming that neither is under duress?
Sounds right.
Sounds like a good definition of market value.
Yes.
Okay. So, then maybe you could explain, because I think when we put the parlor properties out for bid, I think we marked it for a reasonable exposure of time. We had a specified date. It was sold in cash in terms of the equivalent. Buyer and seller each acting prudently, knowledgeably, and neither was under duress. And I believe the offer or the purchase price was in the 30,000s. I don't know, but what I'm hearing, you know, from Supervisor Hammond and other assessors, what was the assessed value that you guys put on?
I believe it was just over 500,000.
528,000.
Can you explain how you came up?
I can explain that we took everything into consideration, took the comparables we have. We didn't consider an open market transaction, because I don't know where it was marketed at $32,000.
Did you try to find out before?
And we've asked the question and never got an answer.
Who did you ask?
I choose not to say that. Somebody in this room, but I choose not to throw them out of the bus right now.
Well, I think who you're throwing under the bus are the people that purchased the property, trying to do something with it. Because you, you just said that you agree that this is a fair representation.
Right, but I don't think that this particular property meets all those standards.
What part doesn't it meet?
Open market, open market transaction listed for a reason.
How, what, how did we offer the property to sell?
We advertised it on the internet and in the newspaper.
So, wouldn't you consider that an open market?
That's the way we typically advertise a property.
How much more open could we have advertised it?
I don't think it was on any commercial websites or anything like that, that somebody nationwide could have, could have come and looked at the property and reasonably given a, you know, been in market in competition to buy the property.
Okay, but so that's your, that's your opinion?
That's my opinion, yes.
It wasn't?
It's my opinion and my staff's opinion that it was not an open market transaction. I don't have the documents in front of me, but if you're willing to discuss it further, absolutely. Probably not in this forum.
No. Yeah. Well, I think it needs to be discussed, because so.
Sure.
It was marketed, it was on the internet, it was one through two RFPs. Somebody bought it, that under the definition of the American Institute of Real Estate Appraisers. And then they were assessed about 15 times more than the purchase price. So, what's the remedy then? Okay, so?
The remedy is, we can sit down and discuss both sides of it, not just anecdotal, it's not worth that. But I need to see information that supports $32,000 for all those buildings and all that acreage. I'm pretty sure anybody in here does not think it's worth $32,000.